Good morning, this is August 5th Board of Elections meeting. We will start the meeting off with our chairman getting sworn in by the clerk of court, Samantha Bennett.
I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge, to the best of my ability, the duties imposed upon me by law as chairman of the Board of Elections and Registrations for Ware County so help me God.
I agree.
Sign this for me.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome back, Mrs. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amen.
We have a couple more items, real quick, like we're gonna keep the camera on the chairman.
We have two new members or one reappointed and one new member. We'd like to present them with their certificates from the governor, Mr. Andy Preston. Congratulations, and we look forward to working with you, Mr. Vernon Chambles.
Mr. Chairman, now we have a full-fledged board, everyone's sworn in and ready to go.
And now declare this meeting of the Ware County Board of Elections and Registration open, and our first item of business is called invocation and pledge. The invocation, Mr. Andy Preston, would you mind leading us in that?
Yeah, we just thank you for this time together, Lord, to serve for you and, Lord, I just pray that you'll be with us during this meeting, and bless Christ, and I pray, amen.
Amen. The pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call and recognition of guests, Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'm Andy Preston.
Here.
Marion Solomon Gaines.
Here.
Vernon Chambles.
Here.
Ludine Whitfield.
Here.
And the chairman, Dana Bartlett.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, all are present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, sir.
And we have no guests signed up.
You have the agenda in front of you. Are there any additions to be made to the agenda before we get started? Hearing none, we will approve the agenda without objection. We have no organizational session, we have no public comments. You have the meeting minutes in front of you from last time, look over those real quick, see if there's any corrections that need to be made. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, we will approve the minutes without objection. Okay, our next item will be new business, set time for early voting for the November 4th municipal special election, Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, you have before you the information on the January 4th municipal, we call it municipal general, I said November? I'm sorry, November 4th municipal general slash special election. Staff is proposing that we have early voting. Well, let me go to start off by saying normally we have the board to set the hours of early voting, things like that, so we'll make sure we all on the same page, okay? And the early voting, as recommended by the staff, is eight to five, eight AM to five PM, that'd be Monday through Saturday, we have two Saturday votings and no Sunday voting. Excuse me, nine to five would be on Saturday, excuse me.
Okay, you've heard the supervisor's request, do we have a motion to accept?
So moved.
I second that, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion by Mr. Preston, second by Ms. Marion, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay, motion carried. Next item is supervisor's report, Mr. Supervisor.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have six or seven items I'd like to make you aware of. First, I wanted to give a recap, a review of the July 15th Public Service Commission special primary, as you know, we only had one consolidated precinct, things went well, of course turnout was lower than what was expected, but we still expected a low turnout, but it was crazy low, but I'm pleased to let you know that we had no issues whatsoever. Actually, the consolidated precinct worked just fine, and actually, we haven't heard anything negative about it, so we're glad about that. The state investigator stopped by to check him out, he saw nothing wrong, of course. Almost every election over the past two years, we've had a state investigator to pop in at least one of the precincts, and so far, we have had no issues, no complaints, you know, and everything has been great. Poll workers have done a tremendous job, and led by our poll manager at the precincts, and so I'm proud of their efforts, and I think we ought to be proud of the poll workers that we have in Ware County, I think we do an awesome job here in Ware County. Do you have any questions on the runoff? Okay, Mr. Chairman, the next item, just to give you an update on the elections specialist process, we, on July 21st, we opened up the process to hire our election specialists. Today, we have in the neighborhood of about 10 applications, no one has prior election experience, that's not a bad thing necessarily, because they can be trained to do all the technical work and office work that we need done. So the hopes and the plans, as soon as we come back from the Gavio Conference, we'll schedule probably interviews with the top two or three, and then we'll go from there. I'm not saying that we will hire necessarily from that list, it all depends, you know, we're not desperate to the point where we have to hire, you know, someone from the list, but we hoping that someone will rise to the top and someone we can work with and train, and actually can handle the task, you know, that's required, you know, lifting the equipment, a lot of the technical work that's needed, and some of the administrative items, and basically being able to kind of like spearhead our poll workers program, you know, training and everything like that, so I'm hoping that we'll have a couple of them that will rise to the top that we can interview and offer a job to hopefully to someone in September. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just have a question, when is the deadline again?
Well, it's gonna be open until field.
Okay, okay, very good.
Yes. Okay, the next item, Mr. Chairman, it's gonna be an update on election material disposal process, in our downtime, you know, between the runoff and the November election, it's almost dangerous, could give me time to think, and so what, you know, I sat back and I've been picking up the phone, I called our clerk of court, Mr. Samantha Bennett, and I wanted to know, you know, when was the last time that we purged and destroyed, disposed of any of the clerk of court's election material? You know, the law, you know, getting with the attorney, the law states that anything past two years, 24 months, you know, should be disposed of, we have no knowledge, I've talked to Ms. Laura who's been here, you know, 10, 11 years, we don't know when the last time, and we don't know what's in storage, and of course, storage is an issue. For major elections, we'll turn over about eight, nine boxes of things consistent of absentee ballots, everything's under seal, from, you know, from, you know, copies of all documents that we accumulated from the election. So over the past week, the attorney, Ms. Bennett, and myself, we've been going through and trying to develop a process to help the clerk of court purge and destroy some of the items that need to be destroyed, so what we're gonna do is, once we return from Savannah, from the conference, we're gonna go over to her storage and find out what our election boxes that we have over there that need to be destroyed, and once we do an inventory of the boxes, that list will be turned over to the grand jury for them to inspect, and then hopefully they will approve destruction of the material, and that's dealt with the grand jury, the grand jury will sign an order authorizing the destruction of anything past 24 months. So once we do that, the plan is either for Ms. Bennett or myself to present every year to the grand jury to dispose of anything past 24 months, you know, to free up the space, because we have boxes, I know since I've been here, we have boxes in some, every cubbyhole in the clerk's possession, and so we're just trying to help them out and do our due diligence and make sure that we handle the disposal of the election materials that need to be disposed of properly.
Very good, any questions?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, after the approval, our, the disposal process will be shredding or, because the county has a shredding account with somebody somewhere, so that information will be shredded.
That's correct, there's a disposal company, you know, they have to do a chain of custody, they will receive it, and they will have to certify that they destroyed all of the materials, because even though boxes are still personal protected information that's in those boxes that must be destroyed properly, and so, so once it's turned over, we'll contact the disposal company, they'll come in, and then they'll take possession of it, and then they will, you know, sign the chain of custody saying it was destroyed according to law.
Secretary of State list maintenance update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, July, the Secretary of State's office started the no general election process and the cross-state mailing process for the state, and we had quite a few notices to go back, to go out to residents. So far, we've had probably 300 or more return notices, and return notices are those notices that people no longer live at their registered address, or, and if they have a return or forwarding address on file, the notices still have to come back to us because the post office can't forward them, but then we can turn around and forward it to that address, but they will still have to come in and request to stay on the list. So we're in the middle of that process now, but also, this month starts the last phase of that, and then there's a no contact list this month, so there's a couple hundred people that's haven't had no contact with the election office since basically 2019 or before, and so that list, that mailing will go out, I want to say this week or the first of next week, the Secretary of State's office, through their contract with the company, sends out all of the notices, and then they'll be mailed back into us, and then that's when Lori will, if they come back in and say, I want to stay on the list, that's fine, if we don't hear from them, they go on a 40-day clock, and then they will be put in the inactive status and then removed. Again, that doesn't prevent them from re-registering, but if they're removed, you know, they won't be on their current voter rolls, they would have to re-register at that time. Any questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I just want, I don't have a question, but I want to inform the public that Superintendent Nelson posted that information on our Facebook page, so I'm just encouraging everybody to check that page on a regular basis, also, check your voting status on a regular basis, you don't want to come up to a very important election in November, whenever, and find out that you can't vote. The information is out there, it's just a matter of people going to the site and pulling the information up, I encourage everybody, and I say this all the time, all the time, check your voting status. That's all, back to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Al. Next, November 4th, 2025 municipal general special election update.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as you know, we have the municipal election in your package, I just put some information in there just to let you know that the city posted their qualifying fee again, their resolution last week in accordance with the law notifying the citizens that District 1, 2, and 3 is up for reelection this year. Also, the special election notice was also posted last week, and that's District 4, that's a seat that was held by Diane Hopkins, so that's a vacant seat, and so that's up. So I want to remind anyone in the City of Wecross, if they would like to register or need more information, they need to contact the clerk's office at the City of Wecross, because they will handle the qualifying for those positions, and the way it works, the city handles all of this upfront, they would do their qualifying, then once the qualifying is over, then we take over, that will include any challenges or whatever, this board will then take over and run the election to the end, and so, and if anybody noticed last week, we, you know, we had a public release in the paper authored by the chairman talking about our role in city elections, I think it was very detailed, and hopefully that kind of like, you know, solved some people's concerns about the board of elections should have done this, should have done that, it's up to the city to call for their own elections or to ask us, you know, through resolution, to call for the election, and that's what we did, Mr. Chairman. Any questions on that part of it? Okay, so when it comes down to November 4th election, also, you see a public notice, we're gonna do logic and accuracy testing, we'll start on September the 8th, that's as if the package, the database is prepared in time by the project team in Atlanta, if not, we'll start soon after September 8th as possible. And so, what we do on the logic and accuracy, we test all of the pieces of equipment, first we go back and we'll make sure all the ballots are correct, then once the project package comes in, we'll test the BMDs, we test the scanner, we test the scanner unit, which is ICC and the election night equipment, we'll test everything to make sure it's accurate, and then one of the final steps, we'll test the poll books, which is the poll pass, and then once we do that, we'll sign off and certify with the state that, hey, everything is done, everything is programmed correctly, all the ballots came out correctly and tallied properly, so if anyone wants to see the process, it's time consuming, it's not a quick and easy process, it goes over multiple days, but we'll be glad to, you know, to have your little area where you can watch the process takes place, so call the office just in case September 8th is not the day we get the project package, it may be that Tuesday or Wednesday, but soon after that, we'll get the package, but I want to make sure this gets in the paper soon, because once qualifying is over, that's when everything hits the ground running, and we don't know exactly when the state will have the project packets forced, but I need to go ahead and get this in the paper as soon as possible. Any questions on the logic and accuracy? Okay, moving on to election night, the next legal notice that you have is talks about the scanning of absentee ballots, and that'll be done on election night on November 4th. I put down there 5:00 PM, we're not sure how many absentee ballots we have, but I want 5:00 PM, that's the starting time, it may be 6:30 if you don't have a few, but at least we're not gonna do it before, the citizens know we're not gonna do it anytime before 5:00 PM, and anything that we do is scanning the absentee ballots before 7 o'clock, everything is private, you know, we're not allowed to talk about any, even the absentee ballot crew, the poll workers, are not allowed to communicate with anybody, say, I saw ballots, you know, so many, and so, you know, for whatever candidate, so everybody, you know, must maintain the silence, the secrecy of it all, okay? And the early computation, we talk about that, 6:00 PM is the time that we could start scanning ballots, again, too, none of the results are shown to y'all or the public, and I will thank y'all, because, you know, every time we have an election, we have pretty much a full board in our room to watch the process and to oversee the process, and so we, so if we have any hiccups, everyone's aware of where the hiccup is, and, you know, we work through it, and we'll make sure that everything is done proper and in order. And then the canvassing, the canvassing part is what happens after the election, that what we do, we take how many early votes we had, how many absentee ballots we had, how many election day ballots, and then we'll make sure that if the system says we had 300, we're gonna have 300 ballots, and so that's the canvassing part that we do. Some elections are real short and easy, like the June and July, and we're able to certify the night of the election, okay? This may be the case, so what I did was, it says here, we will do that on election night, but I think we're gonna have absentee ballot, because the city is a little bit more contentious than a lot of other elections, so there's plan for that Friday, November 7th, to do certification, because if there's any provisionals or anything that prevents us from certifying on election night, we will have to wait until, you know, two and a half days after the election, which will be the November 7th at 5:00 PM certification period, so we're not gonna plan for the election night, you know, unless something happens to where we just know three or four weeks in advance that we don't have no ballots out there, and we may plan, you know, for a meeting for that night, and then we advertise it, and then if not, we'll just follow along with the Friday night, Friday afternoon certification meeting. Any questions on the canvassing and?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just scanning absentee ballots at last, I mean, I'm sorry, at last sentence, municipal special election will be scanned beginning at 5:00 PM on Friday, June 20th, 2025, that needs to be corrected, y'all see where I'm coming from?
Yeah, that's the first section, okay, thank you. Thank you, I will make that correction, I haven't put this in the paper yet, but this is just for a draft for y'all to see, thank you for catching that.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Good catch, Ms. Marion.
It is.
2025 Gavio Conference, August 10th through 13th, 2025, in Savannah.
Yeah, as the board and everybody is aware, we will be going to Savannah on Sunday for the Gavio Conference, we'll be back on the 13th, I just wanted to spend this time, make sure everybody got their travel plans situated, make sure we, you know, know how everybody's gonna get there, I put some information on your, in your package, Ms. Laura found the ferry schedules, because we'll be standing across the river, and so we put that in there, I want to give you some more pins, because we will be trading pins with other counties, you know, a lot of counties are looking forward to that, now, some counties are disappointed, they didn't take part in it, but.
Which county is that?
Huh?
Which county?
I said, a lot of counties are disappointed, they weren't able to take part in it, because there's some very, very unique pins out there, real nice pins, but, so Sunday, we'll get there, there's a, kind of like a beginner election session, just to let you know that all the sessions are in like one general. Just to let you know that all the sessions are in like one general room. There'll be five, 600 people in one general room. And the presenters will be 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 coming up to present to us. So it won't be a whole bunch of breakout rooms. There may be times where there may be a breakout, you know, after lunch or whatever. But I I really don't foresee that. We'll basically just get a seat and then presenters will come up and present the topics to us. And so dress warm because sometimes the rooms get kind of cold. And then just, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing from Mr. Andy and and Mr. Vernon after y'all come back from your ferry ride or the boat ride, you know? And I want to see y'all dressed up because the theme is the 30s?
20s or 30s?
Yeah, 20s to 30s. And so Mr. Vernon, he dresses like that most time anyway. Just waiting to see what Andy wears. You know, but but this, but this, this is the first time we, you know, we've taken this many, you know. And also, before I before I go any further, I want to I want to welcome, you know, Ms. Ludin here because, you know, she had a little little health scare and had her scared. And and so she she agreed to not attend this one just to wait until the Athens trip because it's a lot of, a lot of walking going on in Savannah. And and we really didn't want her to, you know, to get over there and have an episode over there or walking on cobble cobblestone streets and and have issues. But but she's gone before. And so I'm I'm looking forward to getting the new board members, you know, trained and seeing, you know, and and get get an opportunity to talk to other counties and see what they're doing differently, what they're doing better than we're doing, and we can bring back and improve. And just hearing about the election process altogether. Because we have an educated board, but we always can keep, you know, we can continue to learn. And so I'm looking forward to it. I know Andy is looking forward to it. He's saying he still don't know what to do on the board. And I think that's a that's a normal, that's a normal thing with with the elections. Because we just truck right along until something raises its head and we have to be ready to respond. And we've had a couple of those situations in the past. So so that's the update on the Gabrielle 2025 Conference. Any questions on that?
I don't have a question. I just want to know if whoever from Ware County, if you get there in a seat, let them know how many are with you so you can, everybody can sit together. You don't want one here, one there, one because, when we went, John Fluke was our supervisor. He had to sit in the back. He was not with us at no time. So when you get there and you get a seat, let them know how many you got. And they will give you a sign to say where it came, and that's where everybody will be there. So everybody be together.
The only thing I will will correct what Ms. Ludin said, they won't give you a sign. A lot of the counties made their own sign. So we made signs for everyone this year. So we will put signs, yeah, we will put signs at the table, you know, and then we'll, we can move them around. You know, but I wanted to make sure everyone had a sign, you know, signed seat.
Excuse me? Is the gator on our sign?
Our logo is on the sign.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I think we have a gator on there also.
Yeah, we had a gator.
Yeah, I want to make sure we all sit together and we can, you know, and that's fine. If you if you if you meet, especially on Tuesday, Wednesday, whatever, if you meet some some other counties, you know, form a connection, you want to sit with them and talk with them, that's, you know, that's fine, too. I mean, that's no, you know, that's no, that's no problem. But if you want to sit together as a group, that's great, you know, you know, you're on your own. I just want I just want us to come back with some good information and being able to put it in the in the practice. And I think we will have some good information to share with the with the citizens.
Okay, any questions? All right, the financial summary for FY 2026.
Mr. Chairman, I don't have it right now, Ms. Beverly.
It's 2026 Gabrielle in Athens.
Oh, that's right.
Well, the 2026 Gabrielle is going to be in Athens, March 22nd through the 25th. We won't, we won't be able to take everyone at that at that conference. But we've we've always allocated two slots for board members. And so once we get back, and the reason why we, reason why they are on the heels of each other, it seems like it's a real short turnaround is because next year is a gubernatorial cycle. So once we get past March, you know, the year is out. I mean, it's going to be all elections from there on. So they they had to push this one up until, you know, for for the March. Because state law says we, as a board, you need to get 12 hours. At least one board member needed to attend every conference, and we get 12 hours. So this gives us, for 2025, the Savannah Conference gives us all 12 hours of training that we need to have in in the law. And then so March will give us the 12 hours we need for next year's conference. So we always going to have a conference maybe early or late in the in the cycle. And so you mentioned 2026 financial summary. I don't have it, Ms. Ms. Beverly. It's a little bit too early for us. She normally gets it around about the 10th of the month for us. But I'll get it to your package, get it in your package. But we've only had one month on our belts, which is July, that started off fiscal year. And before I go further, I know, Mr. Chairman, I know you had something that you was going to read about disposal of signs, not disposal, but destruction. I'll let you do that. And then the final piece, I put the put the board members' terms in your package. And it's been updated. And so you can you can put it put it in with your group of information. And it gives a historical view of who all was on the board ever since we, you know, the board was created years ago. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. The next item is the superintendent's report and last call. So I'm going to ask for last call before I read this statement. Mr. Preston, you have anything?
I don't have anything.
Ms. Marion?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Vernon?
Don't have anything.
Ms. Ludin? And before she speaks, I want to get on the heels of the supervisor, welcome back. You scared us half to death.
I'm sorry.
We were certainly pleased to see you back up and around.
Thank you.
So with that in mind, Ms. Ludin, any last call?
Glad to be back. I just want to thank y'all for your prayers and y'all concern. I thank God that he brought me through what happened to me. I thank God I was where I was when it happened. Because I lived by myself and I could have been home. But I thank God and everything. So and then one thing that Ms. Gang was talking about the Facebook and newspaper. If you don't have Facebook and you don't have newspaper, take five minutes and go to the Board of Education and ask information. And somebody will give it to you. It's not a saying, I don't have it, I can't get it. Yes, you can. You pass by there all the time. Just pull up in there and ask for information, and they'll give you any information you need. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Yes, Ms. Marion?
Will you talk about that?
Mr. Supervisor, you want to talk to us about this app?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to remind y'all, and I'm glad because I had it in my notes, but I had it covered up. We have about 300 people signed up for our app. It gives updates and on on the election items. So if you go to your phone and and text to the number 91896 and you and your message, if you say, "Vote where," you will be opted in and you will you will receive notices. You know, like, for example, on the 18th starts the application process for this November election. You know, so anyone who comes in now wants to get an absentee ballot, we can accept it. Because the earliest you can do it is October, I mean, August 18th. You'll get you'll get more notices as the election gets close, about the early voting. We've had people this last election say they received a text and alerted them to come on out and vote. And so this is something we're we're starting. We want to get everyone that we can signed up. We paying for it in a way, you know? Everybody keeps saying, I don't have Facebook, I don't get the paper, I don't listen to that radio station and this and that. This is another way that you can get signed up for for notifications. Even if you have a parent who may be too old and say, I don't do text messaging. But you can sign up. Somebody somebody from Savannah could sign up that their parent lives in Waycross and just call them and say, hey, Mama, I just got a notification that you can do your absentee ballot application now. So so it's not just, you know, it's it's not just people that got phones. If you've got a loved one that you that you want to be made aware of what's going on, you know, they can they can they can sign up also. It's not just to receive text messages, but if you have information, you can you can type in, you know, there's a phone number there, 406-0040, and say, "Vote by mail." It will give you the link to where you can go and and register to vote for, I mean, not to register, but get your application to vote by mail. You can type in precinct issues, and it will actually interact with you and say, which precinct are you talking about? What is it, equipment issue, so on, so on, so? So we haven't even scratched the surface of what can be done with this with with this program yet. And we just want to make sure we get everyone signed up. And I appreciate you asking about it because I overlooked it. But call the office if you have any issues and want to and want to learn how to sign up. We want 300 is not enough. We'll we'll rather have 3,000 or 4,000 people signed up so we can keep up, keep everyone informed. Because our goal is to increase voter turnout. Yeah, you know, we had 1%, you know, less than 1% back in June. We had less than a half percent back in July. I mean, we can't, we can't, I mean, everyone has a right to vote. Everyone has a right not to vote if you're, if if, you know, if if you're qualified. But we would prefer everyone who's who's eligible to vote to vote, to be a part of the process. This is what I have here, Mr. Chairman. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Anybody else have anything? All right. As the supervisor said, come to our attention, there's been some political sign destruction. So I want to read this statement concerning that. As Chairman of the Ware County Board of Elections and Registration, I want to address a recent matter that has come to our attention regarding the removal and destruction of political signs. Our office has received a complaint alleging that campaign signs were removed from a public location and destroyed. While we understand the frustration this causes candidates and the potential for it to create the appearance of voter or campaign intimidation, it is important to clarify the board's role in these situations. The Ware County Board of Elections and Registration is responsible for the administration of elections and ensuring that all elections are conducted fairly and in compliance with Georgia law. However, the board does not have enforcement authority over the placement, removal, or destruction of political signs. Incidents involving the destruction, theft, or unauthorized removal of campaign signs are criminal matters that should be reported to local law enforcement for investigation. We strongly encourage all candidates and residents to respect the campaign materials of others as interference with campaign signs not only violates the law but undermines public confidence in the fairness of our local elections. Our board remains committed to maintaining transparent, impartial, and secure elections for all voters in Ware County. Thank you very much. Seeing that we have come to the end of our agenda and there being no further business, we will adjourn this meeting without objection.